I'd like to call to order the West Covina Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, April 22 at 7:05 PM. Would you all please stand for a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Blackburn and remain standing for a moment of silence afterwards. Thank you.
Please place your hand on your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Vaez? Commissioner Minifee?
Present.
Mr. Castellanos?
Present.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Present.
Chairman Holtz?
Present. Any changes to the minutes of the meeting of April 8? Corrections, additions? If none, stand approved. Takes us to oral communications. Let me just make a brief statement first. If you plan to speak tonight, there's pink cards up here. Please fill one out and put on there what you wish to talk about and if you're for or against the project. Okay, oral communications. This is the time when any member of the public may speak to the commission on any matter within the scope of duties assigned to the commission relating to non-agendized or consent calendar items. Other matters included on this agenda may be addressed when that item is under consideration. For all oral communications, the chairperson may impose reasonable limitations on public comments to assure an orderly and timely meeting. The Ralph &amp; Brown Act limits the planning, commission, and staff's ability to respond to public comments at this meeting. Thus, your comments may be agendized for a future meeting or referred to staff. The commission may ask questions for clarification if desired at this time. By policy of the commission, oral communications at this time on the agenda is limited to a total of five minutes. Persons who are not afforded the opportunity to speak at this time may do so under Item 8 later on the agenda. One of the things I would like to do, I would assume the majority of people here tonight are about the cell tower, and rather than hold that off for Item 3, I'm going to move it up to the next item, which would be Item 2. Therefore, I would ask if you want to say anything on that particular time, you can wait till we get to that item, or you can do it now. It's your pleasure, but I would suggest you do it when that item comes up after the staff report and you have all the information. Okay, that takes us then to, does anybody wish to come up and talk about anything other than the cell tower or things that are on the agenda?
I want to number four.
You want to wait till number four? Okay. No other items other than the ones that are on the agenda? Okay, that takes us then to item, which I moved up to number 2. It's a conditional use permit, number 13-04, categorical exemption. Applicant is Los Angeles. A Verizon Wireless location is 2655 South Citrus Street, South Hills Country Club. Request for a conditional use permit to install a 60-foot-tall freestanding wireless telecommunications facility designed to resemble a eucalyptus tree at South Hills Country Club near the intersection of East Cameron Avenue and South Boranca Street. May we have a staff report, please?
Chairman Holtz?
Yes.
I have a conflict of interest, and I'd like to recuse myself.
You are reclusive. I'll give you a moment to leave the chambers.
Perhaps I'll take just a moment before he leaves the room to introduce, I probably should have done that before he left, but introduce the city attorney representative for us tonight. It's Chris Cardinelli from Arnold Glassman's office. So, he is here to represent the city attorney tonight, and I know most of you haven't had a chance to meet him.
Thank you. Okay, may we hear a staff report, please?
Assistant Planner Amy Davis will be presenting that report.
Good evening, Chairman Holtz. Good evening, commissioners. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to install a 60-foot-tall freestanding wireless telecommunications facility designed to resemble a eucalyptus tree at South Hills The proposed facility, which is referred to throughout the staff report as mono-eucalyptus, will be located on the easterly portion of the country club, east of Citrus Street, near the intersection of East Cameron Avenue and South Boranca Street. It is staff's understanding that Verizon Wireless selected the subject location to fill a gap in coverage. A public hearing was originally noticed and scheduled for September 24, 2013. On September 19, 2013, the applicant requested to postpone the public hearing. Based on that request, the proposed conditional use permit was not an agendized item, but because public hearing notices had been mailed to owners and occupants within 300 feet of the subject site, a petition with over 100 signatures was submitted to staff. This petition is included in the staff report as Attachment 7, and in March of this year, the applicant was ready to move forward and a new public hearing date was scheduled. The proposed facility is located on a residential zone site that is currently used as the golf course for South Hills Country Club. The zoning code permits the installation of a freestanding wireless telecommunications facility in residential zones when a conditional use permit is approved for the use. The subject site is adjacent to residential zone properties on all four sides, with single-family homes located to the southeast and west, and South Hills High School located to the north. The zoning code requires that freestanding wireless telecommunications facilities be located a minimum of 100 feet away from residential uses. The nearest residential property on the northeast corner of East Cameron Avenue and South Boranca Street is located approximately 136 feet away from the proposed facility. Additionally, the code requires that freestanding wireless telecommunications facilities be located a minimum of 1 half mile or 2,640 feet away from any other facility. The nearest facility is located approximately 3,500 feet away at Cortez Park. The proposed facility is designed to resemble a eucalyptus tree and features a trunk that transitioned into three branch sections. Three horizontal arrays are mounted to the vertical branch sections. Four panel antennas are mounted to each array for a total of 12 panel antennas. The panel antennas are proposed at 53 feet in height. One parabolic antenna is mounted to one of the vertical branch sections as well. Additional branches and leaves stealthy antennas and arrays and provide the appearance of a eucalyptus tree in an effort to substantially reduce the visual and aesthetic impacts from the surrounding public rights of way and adjacent properties. The antennas include covers that simulate leaves as well. The proposed facility will also be surrounded by several mature trees, including pepper trees, pine trees, and other eucalyptus trees. On the left are existing conditions. On the right is a photo simulation of the proposed facility with the mono-eucalyptus located in the upper right-hand corner. The facility will be located within a 30-foot-by-30-foot lease area enclosed by a 6-foot-tall block wall. An equipment shelter and a generator are located within the lease area as well. Two GPS antennas are located on the south side of the equipment shelter. Conditions of approval are included within the resolution. I would like to mention that the resolution in three places listed August 22 as the date that this project was reviewed by the commission and not April 22. This was modified accordingly. And it should also be noted that the Federal Wireless Telecommunications Act of 1996 establishes regulations for wireless providers and for review by local governments. The intent of the city's wireless telecommunications ordinance is to allow the placement of wireless antennas in a manner that does not create negative aesthetic concerns. Issues with health risks associated with RF radiation are prohibited from review by local governments pursuant to the regulations of this act. This proposal is considered to be categorically exempt pursuant to Section 15303 of the California Environmental Quality Act in that it consists of the installation of a freestanding wireless telecommunications facility. In closing, while a mono-eucalyptus does not currently exist within the city, many other freestanding wireless facilities designed as pine trees and palm trees have been approved and subsequently installed. A mono-eucalyptus was recently approved and is currently under construction at Quail Ridge Shopping Center as well. This is an example of a mono-eucalyptus provided by the applicant. It is not located within the city, however. The proposed design is consistent with existing mature eucalyptus trees adjacent to the proposed location, and the facility complies with all applicable development standards set forth in the code. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of the proposed freestanding wireless telecommunications facility. This concludes the staff report, and I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Cardinelli, as Jeff mentioned previously, who's representing the city attorney's office this evening. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Chair, members of the commission and the public. Just wanted to highlight an important note that was in the staff report regarding the Federal Telecommunications Act and its limitations on the city's ability to regulate these sorts of facilities. While the Telecommunications Act, and I'll just refer to it as the Act, does for the most part protect and preserve the city's right to regulate general land use decisions, aesthetic concerns, that sort of thing with regard to these facilities, it does include several exemptions and exceptions to the city's ability to regulate them, and I'll just highlight them here. The city's regulation cannot discriminate against providers of cellphone service. So, for example, the commission cannot arbitrarily exclude one cellphone provider from providing service in the city over and against another. Additionally, a city cannot prohibit or have the effect of prohibiting wireless service. In some cases, this can include prohibiting a wireless service provider from filling gaps in their service. The city must expeditiously process applications. It cannot unduly delay in rendering a decision on them. Any denial must be in writing and supported by substantial evidence in the record. And again, as the staff report highlighted, the city cannot deny an application on the basis of environmental impacts of radio emissions, and that would include health concerns associated with those emissions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions of staff?
If I might add one additional comment, we did provide you information from an attorney's office representing Verizon, so I just wanted to note for the record that that was received and provided to the planning commissioners at the dais.
Right, we see that. Commissioner Minifee, you received that?
Yes.
Mr. Vaez?
Received.
Any questions of staff? None? Would the applicant, I'm sorry. Would the applicant like to come up and speak?
With Spectrum Services, authorized agent for Verizon Wireless, I do not have a statement at this time, but I am available to answer any questions of the commission.
Any questions?
I have no questions.
I have a question. What other alternate locations did you look at on the South Hills Country Club other than the one that you selected?
On the country club itself? That was primarily the main location where we selected because that was the gap where we needed the coverage. The initial ring or the place that they wanted was South Hills High School. And when we talked to the high school, they did not want us to put a site there. They wanted us to move it down the street or north of the high school onto an elementary school that's further north, and again, which was out of our range. So, that's when I came across and got together with the country club, and the location we were looking at fit in with what the country club was looking at. So, that's how we ended up at that location.
So, what you're saying is you didn't look at any other location on the country club itself? It might be-
We did within a smaller range because that's specifically the area that we needed is that intersection, so we did not stray too far away from that.
Okay, but I'm very familiar with the country club. And there's a lot of-
There's an access also right there. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And there's a lot of open space that's away from both housing and from the school. That's, like I'm saying, there's a lot of other locations that are that far away, and I'm just wondering why you didn't consider some of those?
Well, we did. We drove around with the general manager at that time, and we looked at a few locations on there, and it was determined that would be the best location due to access capability and also due to utilities, and that's also the best location on Verizon's side because that filled the area, the gap that we had.
Okay, I'm still having a hard time understanding. I mean, you're giving me the word that that's the best location for Verizon.
It was also the preferred location for the country club, so it was a joint effort.
Okay, so there isn't any other location to move it, let's say, further south when you're getting further away from the school? And there's no houses further south? I mean, if you're, I don't know how familiar you are with the country club.
Well, I'm fairly familiar with it. We did look further south, but with the layout of the country club and stuff, at the time the general manager felt that that would be the best location, and it worked for us, and we agreed to it.
I'm having a little trouble with that, but go ahead. Commissioner Minifee?
If we were to show a diagram of that area, and I think we have one, could you give us an idea of the radius from where you are that might also have been included if you and the general manager had not decided that's where you wanted it to be?
Is it a close-up of the? This is the aerial of the country club, and you can see the school here. So, this is Cameron, and this is Boranca. If you want to use this pointer to kind of discuss the site, the top button is the one that we'll point over.
Okay, so there we are. So, the south end is right up there, so it's only, there's a hole there. We're on the fairway, off the fairway, there's a fairway there, and a hole there, and then there's another fairway coming back this way. So, the distance from here to there, I don't know what the scale is, but it's not-
How big is the area, sir, that you need to service because you have a gap?
The area that we need to service goes down the freeway and then back up the hill. Fair amount. We've also got concerns with topography in that area because going up Cameron, it's going up the hill. We've been working on this site in this area for about eight years, so it's not been a... We came in first spot, we found that was it. This is-
Got it, yeah. But from a mathematical equation, I presume you're trying to triangulate and you're trying to get maximum signal strength, so-
Correct.
I'm still trying to hear what area would be included if you were to look within that whole area of the country club?
Well, if we come over this way-
Yes.
Over here, which is west.
Correct.
Probably, from what I'm being told by the RF engineers, that would have eliminated the coverage area which we're looking for, which is going up the hill of Cameron. So, this would have been too far over. We're also tying into other towers, and we do have, I believe in your report there, there is a tie in to show which of the towers-
So, there's a pretty small radius?
Yes. It's not a coverage site. It's a capacity site, so what we're trying to do is fill in gaps in coverage.
And the closest one is Cortez Park, I think you said, right?
Yeah, I don't know if that's our site. It says there's a power in Cortez Park.
Yeah.
I'm trying to talk as loud as I can. My question is, this is, here's Cameron. Okay, high school is-
Oh, thank you. High school is over here?
Well, that's a field to the right.
That's, okay, there's the high school right there, and there's the proposed facility.
Correct.
Okay. What I'm talking about, I know over here there's a lot of trees and all that, but there are close to the houses, so that might eliminate being closer than 100 foot. But when you come over here, and you come over here, you're removing yourself from a lot of the residents. It's still out of the way. There's trees here, and it would not interfere with the golf course in any way, shape, or form, and it may be more appealing to the neighbors that are against us to move it over here. And what you just said is you're trying to capture this area here and this area here, and it seems to-
Up towards to your right.
This way?
Yeah, south and north, I guess, and then west.
This is north.
Right, and then to the east.
And then to the east. Well, if, here you are here, but if you moved it over here, you still would be in the immediate area, wouldn't you? And there's no home, I think there's only one home here. I don't even know if it's occupied, but you're taking it away from the school, which may make it more appealing to the people that are against us, and that's my question.
Well, there's only one house to the, right there.
Right there.
No, further up.
Further up where?
Yeah, right there. That's a parcel. That's one house there that's on, I don't know.
It's on a hill?
Yeah, it's on about a acre of parcel. That's the only residence.
Well, this here is closer to that house than if you moved it down here, taking it further away.
Up on the hill. If I moved it that way, it would bring me closer to the parcel. More houses, I believe.
There's not more houses.
What's over there? I can't see.
Chair-
No, let's hold it down, please.
Chairman, this is the planning director. There are some houses right there along that street.
Yeah, there's a few houses scattered in here, but there's a lot more over here, and the high school is over here. It's just a question I'm asking. It seems to me there might be some other locations, and it would take the tower further over here, and I'm just asking why that wasn't considered.
Well, we're also on access issues too, because we access it over Cameron, and-
Right there.
On the school, yes, there's an access.
But you can also access, you can also access over here. There's a road over here. There's a road in here and a road back here.
We should probably get back to the-
I just want, because I wanted to see where I was talking to her. I just want to make sure we're looking at all options and not just, that's where we decided to go, and that's where the country club wants it, and that's where it's going to go.
Well, we've also looked at options that were further up on Cameron. You've got a park up there where the coast guard was. That area was looked at intensively a few years ago. It was relooked at again prior to settling at the country club this time. So, as I said, this project's been in the works in this area for-
I know that.
Eight years.
I know that.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean that we rush into it if there's other alternatives. That's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Okay, so I really don't feel comfortable that you're telling me that that's really the only location that could be considered.
Nor do I. Nor do I. We, you know, sir, we're just like these people you see out here. We live in West Covina. We were appointed to the planning commission to be the voice of the people as best we can. Now, we know there are severe limitations on what we can do because Congress has chosen to act on telecommunications. We really, it's too bad we don't have some congressmen here so that these people could address them. But what we can do is see if there are some reasonable alternatives within the space that you need and the space that's allowed. It doesn't bother me if the golf course, if you have to drive across the golf course a few times to get something done, whether it bothers them or not, if it saves the community and saves the neighbors. A lot of headache and concern.
And I'm not against cell towers, believe me, I'm not. I know we need them. As a matter of fact, there's an article in the paper today that AT&amp;T is going to expand, and I'd be willing to bet that every person in this room has got a cellphone or an iPod or something that they want to use, and it's getting more sophisticated all the time, and we know we need these cell towers. Until they go satellite, which is probably not in my lifetime, we need these cell towers. My concern is, is this the best place it could be? That's my concern. Is there an alternative? If there is not, that's one thing, but if there are others, I'm not sure that all the alternatives have been looked at, and that's all I'm asking for.
Well, our belief is that we have picked the best location and that we did look on the golf course that works for all involved.
Are you an engineer?
I am not, no, but there was engineer input for this.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying.
I believe in your package. There is a letter from the engineer.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Well, I think the same question would be then. Did the engineer preclude it being anywhere else on that property?
The engineer came out, they took measurements, they looked at various locations on the property, yes.
I don't think that was an answer to my question.
At this file, I don't know the answer to that.
All right, thank you.
This might be the ideal location. I'm not saying that, okay? What I'm saying is, is there another place that would be workable that could be more acceptable? That's all I'm asking. And I don't feel comfortable that I'm getting the answer that I need to my question.
Well, in our opinion, the answer to that is no, even though you may disagree with it. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to open up the public testimony at this time. First, I'm going to call up the people that filled out a card that are for the tower, and then I'll call up the people that are against the tower, and then the applicant at that time can do any rebuttal that he wants to some of the questions that are raised. Okay, the first card I have is for the tower is from Peter Davis. Please come up, sir.
I want to remind you that we have only five minutes.
Yeah. And remember, we're only allowing five minutes, so everybody has a chance to speak. Thank you.
I live at 2610 East Cameron Avenue, which is on the map near Citrus. I have always had very bad reception on my phone. I am with Verizon. I was with Air Touch first. They were worse. Verizon's improved it a little bit, but it is very bad. If I have something happen to me, I live alone, I don't know that I could get emergency services. It would be iffy. Sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. I walk my dog every day past this corner, past South Hills, down to Cortez, and frequently I get phone calls that are dropped in that area. As far as the health thing, which I guess is illegal to even concern because it's not an accurate thing, we've heard the same thing with the fluoride in the water from the John Birch Society. We've had similar things, even when they invented inside toilets. It was way back when. I'm an old man, so I remember these things. They thought that would poison everybody inside. These things turned out to be non-items. Occasionally, something comes up, but our major researchers in the government and every other source which watch us out for these things say that there is no danger from cell towers. As far as aesthetics is concerned, I grant you the older towers did not look too attractive, but these, you know, the tree doesn't look all that bad to me. Now, what does look bad in that area are the overhead wires, and also they cause deaths when there's a storm or something. Those wires come down and they cause deaths. So, I suggest what we do is put them underground. Then that should take care of the aesthetics far more than the little decrease we get from the cell tower. The other thing that causes deaths and injuries and problems is the traffic, and it's very heavy on Cameron and quite heavy on Boranca and heavy on Citrus. So, I'm suggesting that we turn those into two-lane roads instead of four-lane roads. And we can combine that with burying the wires and things that are there in the middle when we tear it up and put a little parkway in the middle of those, and we discourage people from using those as through traffic. So, if we're going to be concerned about health, that would be a much better solution. If we're concerned about aesthetics, that would be a much better solution, but I know that's not going to happen, just as I know that we're going to have to have the cell tower because we need it. Thank you.
Herb Redholtz?
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and planning commissioners. When it comes to cell tower applications, this planning commission, along with the city council and any other local decision-making board, is very limited in its scope. You cannot, it is limited in how, in what you can use to deny a cell tower application. As I read this and as I listen to your questions, it doesn't sound- this and as I listen to your questions, it doesn't sound to me like you have the legal authority to deny this because you don't like where it is. All this applicant has to do, or any applicant has to do, is say to you, show you that we need it to fill a gap, regardless of where it is. You cannot, you're limited by that federal telecommunications wireless act that says only aesthetics. The only reason you have to deny it, unfortunately, you have, you're going to have good people come up here. They're going to have statistics and charts and graphs and stories, all of which relating to health, none of which legally you can consider when making this decision. It kind of ties your hands. It really does. But there apparently is a reason for it. As Commissioner Menifee says, we ought to have, you know, hopefully there would be a congressman here that could, you know, take some of the, some of the hits. But, you know, of course not. But for you to, and I understand, you know, you're questioning, did you do your due diligence? Did you look at other locations? Is this the only one? Well, you know, I mean, he can say yes, he can say no, but the fact of the matter is, that is not a legal reason to deny it. And if you're going to deny it and you're going to deny it based on that, which you can't, or you're going to deny it based on aesthetics, which you can, you had better, you got to make findings. That leads to that conclusion of aesthetics. Can't you say it's aesthetics? Got to make findings. And those findings better be ironclad to stand up in a courtroom. Because if they're not, guess what? Down the drain. Your decision can be appealed to the council, of course, as we all know. Council's bound by the same rules and regulations, that same wireless act that you're bound to. So am I, hey, you know what? We all, we all want better service. As the chairman has said, everybody's got some sort of wireless device in their pocket. They all complain when the call drops. They all want better service. But it's the NIMBY. I don't want it in my backyard. Actually, I wouldn't mind one in my backyard. I could use the monthly income from the darn thing. But again, you cannot deny it because you don't like where he put it. Can't deny it because people are going to have health issues only for aesthetics. And it better be ironclad. So, you know, I would just, I would just tread great carefully as you go forward. And it doesn't look like you're going to have much choice legally. Okay? Thank you.
Rod Perryman?
Gentlemen, I'm Rod Perryman. I live at 2740 East Cameron. I'm probably second or third house closest to this tree. I have the worst reception in West Covina. I can go in my family room, can't get a call. I can go in my bedroom, call out, get a call. It's ridiculous. It's been that way for years. I also have two 40-foot eucalyptus trees in my backyard. I think they're beautiful. And I'm hoping to see more of them. I'm also a member of South Hills Country Club. I'm a general contractor. I've played the course dozens of times. I can't think of a better location than this. There's lots of homes on the south side of the course as well as the north side. So I'm very much in favor of this. I've been in my home for 26 years. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mark Fuller?
Good evening. I, I am a member of South Hills and also on the board of directors. And I thought that I may be able to answer some of the questions that you answered, you asked earlier when we talked about site selection. And you had asked about moving it to the other side of the course. When we did survey and when we went through the course, we looked at what the area was that would give the tower the ability to provide the coverage that they wanted and keep it furthest away from homes, provide access and furthest away from the schools. And so some of that homework was done and we looked at different areas. And I apologize, if there were a pointer, I could, I could show you that that location happens to be the one that is the furthest away from any of the homes. When we started to talk, thank you, when you talk about down here, there are actually homes on this whole side of the course. So move it back here, we moved it closer to the homes and we also created an access issue. So that was one of the considerations. When we also talked about moving it down further away on this end, it moved it closer to some of the homes. And while it moved it away from the main school facility, it created an access issue, but it was there at the, the field, the property across the street, which is their, their, their sports field. So there were considerations made when we looked at what that location was. With regard to the aesthetics, which is an issue I think everybody's concerned with, there was quite a bit of back and forth with regard to what it was going to look like, certainly for the residents, but for the members as well and while on the course. And so, so the base, and you guys had a drawing, the base block wall would be covered with landscape and privates so that it's not, doesn't look utilitarian from both sides. The, the block base is also under the fence line. So when you are looking at it from the street side, you don't see that, that facility that's gated and blocked in. All you see is the tree. And also at that location, I'm right on that corner, there's a, there is an existing utility pool that one of the neighbors had talked about that has wires coming from every direction and they all come into that intersection, if you will, and that's where all of the lines come out. This tree actually goes behind that and almost creates a screen or a backdrop for that and hides some of that. The other thing that we're in favor of is just simply the idea that coverage there is, is difficult. We have several members who are doctors and felt like it was important to provide that coverage that we don't have now. So I just wanted...
Do you mind if I ask you a question? Sounds to me like you were involved in location on it. Did you look closer to the clubhouse and the pool area?
We did. And, and actually what winds up happening is that, the same thing. It gets it closer to other, it gets it closer, all of these are homes back in here as well. So that site is actually the furthest we could get it away and have it serviceable and behind a screen and at the highest point of the property. So it served all of the purposes that were being kind of considered when we kicked it around. So we wanted to be mindful of all of those things.
Thank you. You made it a lot clearer for me.
Thank you.
I have one I'd like to ask from the same line. There's a string of trees right below the small P in proposed. That's kind of the center line between the, the course, that area.
Right.
Were any of those areas discussed because they would be equidistant from some of the homes?
They, they weren't. There was a number of considerations. Certainly that comes down the hill. It puts it at a lower elevation. But then that is right in the middle of, of two fairways, which, which didn't really provide a constructible kind of an area, if you will, accessible, constructible without taking trees out of the middle of the golf course, if you will. So this was an area that was very serviceable. There's an existing gate there. It's behind the fence. And so it really kind of met all of the criteria.
Thank you very much.
One more question. Aside from the doctors you mentioned who, who had concerns about coverage, do members of the country club make comments about coverage and reception?
For, for years, I think there's been a concern about coverage at the club. And, and, and we did explore several different kind of locations, if you will. My sense is, we also have members that live around that area that would like the improved coverage as well. So you've heard from some.
Thank you.
Thank you. Horizon ought to put you on the payroll. Sam Gincetti?
Good evening. I'm a, I've been a resident of West Covina since 1965, a member at South Hills Country Club since 1967. I currently serve on the board of directors of South Hills Country Club. I just want to emphasize, Mr. Fuller's our club president, I would just like to emphasize, our primary concern in, with respect to this cell tower is reception. We've had numerous complaints from members about the fact that they have difficulty communicating from, from all areas of our club. We have, I would estimate approximately 25 doctors. I personally know of at least two instances where doctors have attempted to contact hospitals and have had difficulty. And as a result, have had to leave the club and, and go to the hospital to make sure that their patients were, were properly being cared for. So I just want to emphasize, that's the club's primary concern. I, I was also present at the time that, that Horizon made its, made its survey. And I would indicate, I would echo what Mr. Fuller has said with respect to the location. And, and incidentally, Mr. Holtz, you make reference to the fact that, as to whether or not a, there had ever been any consideration of a location near the swimming pool. That was considered roughly about four or five years ago by, and, and similar complaints were made by citizens at that time also. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'm, I'm pretty familiar with the course. And are they going to allow cell phones to be used in the clubhouse if this tower goes up?
Yes. Well, they're, they're currently, we can use them all over the, the entire facility except our eating area. There, you can use them in the card room. You can use them on any of the balcony areas, et cetera. The only, the only time that we, we discourage the use of a cellphone is in the dining areas.
Okay. But if it's a doctor, he might want to get a call out there.
Well, trust me, there would be no problem with it if the doctor were to receive an emergency phone call, being permitted to use a phone at that place.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I don't know if this person is for or against. And, got to help me with this name. Sheena? H E I G or H E U G? Are you for or against? Are you for the project?
I'm for the project. I mean, against the project.
You're against the project. Okay. Alex, looks like the same last name. Alex Hang. Are you for or against?
Against.
Against. Okay. Lloyd Johnson, are you for or against? No, true. I'd admit it's Lloyd.
I just want to make a statement. Thank you, Chairman. You know, Lloyd Johnson, I'm a resident of West Covina for over 44 years. You know, I'm also a cancer survivor for almost 13 years. In my neighborhood, I have two cell towers. I kind of understand how the residents feel about the cell towers and what could be microwaves and cancer causing agents, stuff like that. But in the same return is that although I do understand their feelings and their anxiety, these cell towers growing up in their neighborhoods, I do understand what the law says. Except we had two over my neighborhood that were close to mine. And as being a cancer survivor, I didn't want them there, but I didn't have a choice. We all have cell phones. I'd be lost without mine. So you have to make your decision on what the law says. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Okay, these are people for, that are against. Looks like Raymond Chow?
First one in. I live directly across from South Hills High School, which is on Los Arina. And that's exactly north of the cell tower. I'm really concerned about my family because they are, they are home all day, 24 hours, seven days a week. My parents are retired. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old. They're, they're going to be exposed to this radiation wave. I'm not an expert about these, how strong the radiation waves are, but I do know that it's on 24 hours, seven days a week. And they, they're going to be going to school right across the street. And that's 24 hours, seven days a week, 18 years. And I'm, you know, I go to work, so I'm not really exposed much with the radiation, but I fear for my kids. And I bought my house last year. And I've been, my wife and I've been searching for a house since 11 years. And I don't want to move because I like where I live. And, you know, and I'm also concerned with the high schoolers. There's about maybe 3,000 students with this radiation. It's on 24 hours, seven days a week. So you got to think of not just the surrounding homes, could be 50, 100, but 3,000 lives going in and out at that school and is exposed to the radiation. So you got to think of the greater number. Okay?
Thank you. This looks like Ride, R I D E or I D C? Or is it Rick? You're against?
Yes, I am against.
Okay. Is this your card, Rick? R I C K?
Yes, that's Rick.
Okay.
Yes, hi, councilman, or I'm sorry, commissioner. I'm against the cell tower. And I live not too close because I am actually the other side of the grand, but my kid, three-year-old, was probably spent four years of his life across that cell tower, if it's approved. So I'm super concerned in that. I know it's against the law and you guys can't consider it for health reasons. But it stresses me out. My quality of life just went, would you guys, if you guys approve this? Because it's going to basically make me worry about what I'm subjecting my child to. That's one concern. And then knowing that the mayor of the city, a couple of years back, actually in 2008, sorry, actually opposed the cell tower. And it wasn't even in Covina. It was actually just, I mean, sorry, in West Covina. It's in Covina. Because on the grounds that it's going to adversely affect the residents' quality of life. I mean, making people stress about their kids is adversely affecting people's lives. I don't know what you guys have to say about that, but we don't sleep well. I mean, I know you guys have access issues and whatever it is, but, you know, dig a trench, get it closer to somewhere else where it's not going to affect other people. Find a other location, whatever, whatever it takes to not make us stressed. And, you know, that impacts our quality of life. So I'm just, for, I know you, your job is to try to, you know, protect our cities, protect the residents' interests, but, I mean, which is great. So, you know, look at what we're here to try to convey. We're really stressed out about it. That's why we're taking the time to come out here and just voice the concerns. So hope you guys heed that.
Thank you. Jim Roderick?
Good evening. I live in the Covina Highlands area, just to the east of Grand Avenue from, in the South Hills area. So I'm not a West Covina resident. Part of my reason for being here is I was asked as a real estate broker doing a, a lot of work in that area in South Hills, what I thought about potential downside to property values. You can see that whether it's well-founded or not, there are a lot of people with a great concern about these towers, not just aesthetics, but for things that may not be provable and may not even be deniable from the federal government standpoint that are upsetting these people. The result of that is potential loss in property value. And I think that's one of the things you should consider. I've also been looking at some of the things here. I, I noticed the photo simulation showed the tree, quote unquote, in the far right corner of the picture, as if, don't worry about it, it's way off over there. I've never, I've lived here since 1986, and I've never seen a mono eucalyptus tree. I have no idea what it is. But from that picture, it doesn't look like anything I've ever seen. And I think there's another reason that there, none of the other locations in the South Hills Country Club weren't considered is because they don't want it near the clubhouse. And I don't blame them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alex Hung, Hang, I'm sorry. How do you pronounce your last name? Hang, okay.
Good afternoon, good, good evening, actually. Just want to raise a hand. How many people here are actually against? Because not everybody's speaking. So, against. Yeah, so not everybody's going to speak. So I just wanted to show you guys how many people here are concerned, as I am. I was wondering, have they provided proof that there, that there is no other cell tower within the half-mile requirement that they need? Have they provided that to you guys already in, in the application? They have. Because I heard that mentioned earlier that there wasn't another servicing tower within the area. I just wanted to make sure that that is legitimate. And the other, was there any invite? sure that that is legitimate. And the other, was there any environmental studies done as part of the applicant package that Horizon provided to you guys? Any required or anything like that? For like, I don't know, animals or anything like that?
When you're finished, I'm gonna refer those questions to staff for an answer.
All right. Those are the two main concerns. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Staff, would you like to respond?
I would suggest completing, finishing the hearing before we...
Okay, all right. Sheena Hang? You're against, right?
I am against, yes. First, I'd like to say that this is mainly primarily a residential zoning area, and by permitting the tower, this will change the zone to commercial use. And I just want to let you know that we did not buy our house in a commercial area. We bought a house where residents lives. Now, we are, we're here asking that this planning commission do not grant them this use because it does not fit in with the residential normal use. We residents are concerned of a proposed towel, cell towels, reducing the value of our homes and properties. Who would want to live next to one or under one? And imagine what it's like for people who purchased or built their dream home in neighborhood only to later have an unwanted cell tower installed just outside their window. Some of us have been living here more than 40 years or so. This negative effect can also contribute to urban blight and a deterioration of neighborhoods and school district when resident wants to move out or pull their children out because they don't want to live or have their children attending school next to a cell tower. People don't want to live next to one, not just because of health reasons, but also due to aesthetics and public safety reasons. Cell towers become eyesores, obstructing or tarnishing cherished views. These people, these points underscore why wireless facility or commercial facility that don't belong in residential areas. Putting cell towers in a residential property is just bad business. For residential owner, it means decreasing property values. For local business, realtors and brokers representing and listing these properties, it will create decreased income. And for city government, it result in decreased revenue, property tax. A number of organizations and studies have documented the detrimental effect of cell towers on property values. The Appraisal Institute, the largest global professional membership organization for appraisal with 91 chapters throughout the world, spotlighted the issue of cell towers and the fair market value of a home and educating its member that a cell tower should in fact decrease in a home value. If it means 2% to 20% decrease in a home value, that this means that if our home is valued at $1 million, you're talking about $20,000 to $200,000 down the drain, just because you are building this cell tower. And all of us here are being affected, not just one person. The golf course is just one person making the money, but all of us are paying for it. Now, our neighboring city residents and real estate professionals who inform city officials about the detrimental effects of cell towers on home property values. In Glendale, California, which is not too far away, local resident professionals, Adora Beal, described how a Spanish home in the Woodland Hills listed for $1 million sold $25,000 less due to a cell tower across the street. Perception is everything. Quote, "If the public perceive it to be a problem, then it is a problem. It really does affect property values," according to her. Another Realtor, Donna Bahana, she's the president Realtor of Celeste International Realty in resident of the Bourbon Hills, she addressed to the Los Angeles Board of Supervisor, explained negative effect of cell tower on property value in the surrounding area. As a Realtor, I must disclose potential bios where there are any cell towers nearby. I have found in my own experience that there is a very real stigma and cellular facility near homes are perceived as undesirable. Burbank, California, as for Burbank, City Council Public Hearing, a licensed, California licensed real estate professional, Alex Saffarian, informed city official that, and that local real estate professional he spoke with agreed about the adverse effect the proposed cell tower would have on property. Quote, "I've done research on the subject, as well as spoken to many real estate professionals in the area, and they all agree that there's no doubt that cell towers negative effect real estate value." Steve Hova Kimian, a real estate, a resident and a California real estate broker, and he, the publisher of a Home by Design monthly real estate magazine, state that he has seen property near cell towers lose up to 10% of their value due to a proximity of the cell tower. So even if they try to disguise them as tacky fake pine tree or whatever tree you want to disguise the mass, real estate professionals are required by the California Association of Real Estate Realtors that sellers and licensee must disclose material fact that affect the value or desirability of a property, including conditions that are known outside and surrounding areas. So 27 Burbank real estate professional in December 29 signed a petition statement offering the professional opinion that the proposed cell towers would negative impact the surrounding homes, stating that it is our professional, a professional opinion that cell towers decrease the value of home in the area tremendously. Peer review research also conclude cell sites do indeed cause a decrease in home value. We are resident of West Covina, and we are here tonight pleading with this planning commissioners to protect, respect our wishes, and deny the proposed Horizon lease at this location. Please protect the welfare of our residents and their property, as well as West Covina's real estate professionals and the city of West Covina. Higher property values mean more tax for the city, which helps improve our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That's the last card I have with the applicant. Would anyone else wish to speak against? Come on up, fill out a card, please, when you're finished.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Certainly.
There's a couple of things that I'm concerned about in terms of the way this telecommunications law was passed in 1996.
Would you like to state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Charles Shaw, live at 2714, Larkwood, East Larkwood Street, just behind South Hills High School. Is that enough? This, this law that was passed by Congress, telecommunications law, 1996, I read through it, and all I see is existing wireless towers that for modification, for modification, existing wired towers, and then over on this section here, yeah, it's over here. I lost my place. Oh, here it is. It says, what is interesting about the language that Congress chose is that it left open the possibility that the states and local governments could still deny application of structures that are not existing, non-existent at this point. In other words, this talks about existing towers that they can modify and things, and have to be within a certain thing. But this, the way I read this, it says that they left it open that you have the right to make that your own decisions, even though the act is indicating, I mean, everybody's talking about it, it's a done deal, because the only thing we can talk about is aesthetic, aesthetics. But you have the right to make your decision based on what I'm reading in that report. The other thing is a setback. I was talking to the gentleman in front of me. There's supposed to be one foot per every foot of height, and if that's gonna be, it's not gonna be sitting on, if it's in the spot they put it on the map, there's that, it's not gonna be on the sidewalk, I hope. It's not gonna be, how far back, how high is the tower gonna be?
60.
60 feet. So it would be 60 feet back inside the golf course. It'd be somewhat of a structure to knock the ball around, wouldn't it?
It would not be in the way.
It would not be in the way. Well, anyway, I just wanted to point out the fact, also there's the, there was that middle-class tax relief bill, the job recreation bill that Obama passed in 2012, that also set for existing towers only. And if you look it up, that's for your information.
Thank you, sir. Would you please fill out a card when you get a chance? Please fill out a card.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. Looks like A. Gillingham?
Hello. I wasn't prepared to speak, but I just want to, after listening to the people that are pro for this, it seems like the golf course people were pretty much in on this eight-year consideration. How many of the residents were considered and asked about in the eight years? I don't hear any of the residents being asked in the eight-year study. I hear golf course people. And by the way, some of those people, I don't know the percentage, don't even live in our city. So those doctors may come there, and they want the convenience of the cell tower use, but they leave our city. They don't live here. The residents all here live here, so they should be considered. That's my second point. And I guess that's all I have to say. I'm not certain about whether this is good or bad, but I certainly am concerned about supporting the residents who feel it is, and I hope you guys consider it as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Iron Pike?
Yes, good evening. I'm actually pretty close to the tower myself, and I also walk my dog every day, and twice a day. And I have a very old cellphone. I'm not, I don't have a smartphone. And not once have I ever had a problem receiving a call. Now, I do respect the people that live there that do have problems, but I walk around Virginia Lane, I walk all the way past the school, I walk all the way to Mount SAC. I've never had a problem, and my provider is Verizon. The, I guess the other thing I would say is I heard earlier other locations that have been considered, and I also walked my dog to the park up the road on Cameron, and that park's a pretty open area, plenty away from homes. Is there a reason, or what was the reason, that the tower wasn't considered in that park, right in the middle, away from all the homes? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I've been a longtime resident of West Covina, in fact, all of my life. I've lived in the same home that I've been in since I was a child. I live on 3059 Los Rios Drive. And I'm, I know there's limitations to what can be done in regards to the health, but I am a science teacher. I teach an environmental science program, and I am very, very concerned about the health situation. I also work with the Natural Resources Defense Council, and many, many studies have been done on EMFs, especially having to do with children. Children are the silent victims to it. They are the ones that are really going to take the hit. And we are in such close proximity to so many schools, and the EMFs are broad-spread. Now, I know a lot of people are concerned about the aesthetics. The aesthetics are nothing compared to the long-term health effects that it can have on people. My husband is a cancer survivor. I'm concerned about him every day. I live right in that area, and I don't have problems with my cellphone service. I'm sorry for those people who do have problems with it, but I would really like for some consideration to be made to find another place for that cellphone tower so that it's not so close to the homes. When I look at that map, I see that cellphone tower right next to my home. I see it right next to the high school. I see it very, very close, within range to the elementary schools. And there are a lot of children in our area that are gonna be detrimentally affected by this. It is a health concern. It shouldn't be a matter of that it's a dumb-looking eucalyptus tree in a neighborhood. It is so far, far beyond that. The importance of this issue go way beyond it. So if you can look beyond the fact that maybe your hands are tied, you are limited, and try to utilize some other facet of trying to stop this tower, at least from the proposed area, and try to keep in mind, though, in the back of your head somehow, that it is a health concern, and even though you have limitations, to try to find another loophole, to find a way to make it a different situation. Because I know for myself and all these other concerned people, this is a really bad deal. In the long term, it's a bad deal. We may not see it now. It may be convenient, but I see cancer in people's futures. I see other health problems, Alzheimer's. I've been doing studies on it. Alzheimer's is an epidemic. And do you think that perhaps Alzheimer's has something to do with the increased EMFs that we're taking in every day? There could be a very big possibility of that, but the studies are not in on that. I have two parents that have Alzheimer's disease, and it's not a great situation for them or my family. And I think that the environmental impacts of things that we're not really sure about are coming to light today. So I hope that you do consider these things when you do make your final decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi. I have not prepared a speech, but hearing all this, I typed one on my phone. So I am 17 years old. I go to South Hills High School. I live 10 feet from the Country Club. I literally like step off my driveway, and the golf course is right there. So I understand everybody's point and view, point of view and argument, but for those who are for the cell tower, please don't be selfish. Please consider everybody else. Please consider all the lives that are being affected in your neighborhood and your community. Okay? So don't only consider your phone and your social life. Like, I know you want to talk on your phone all the time, and maybe you talk to your loved ones, but there are many other people in the neighborhood who have, who have families living at home, who have just bought the home or built a home. They have spent 10 years maybe building up the home, and in a neighborhood they would love to live in, but having this big cell tower right there, it's really unappealing, especially to home buyers. And how many of you here are parents, grandparents, future parents? Would you want your kids or...
Josephine, I hate to interrupt you, but could you please address the commission, not the audience?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
How many of you guys will want your kids or your loved ones living near a cell tower? It has many radiation, and it could affect your children or your loved ones, and you don't want anything happening to them. You don't need good reception. You just need your family, your loved ones, to stay at home, to spend time with them. You don't need to be always on your phone, talking to other people. I know you might have business and stuff, but, you know, you don't have to deal with that all at home. You can go to your office. You can go to somewhere else, like Starbucks, or wherever you want. So please consider that, and please do not build a cell tower at home. I will be living here for the next few years, and I don't want anything happening to my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else against? Would the applicant like to come up and do a rebuttal? No? Okay. Okay, we'll close it to public testimony, and before we do that, could you, there was a couple of questions that were asked. Could you address those, Jeff? One of them, I think, was studies done on environmental impact, and if they provided data that that was the best location, I think those were the two things. And the other one, I think somebody said that we'd have to change the zoning because it was going there?
Okay, well, let me start with that one. No, no, cell sites are allowed in, in all zones in the city. They just cannot be within 100 feet of a residentially developed or zoned property. So this is not, this is in a residentially zoned property, but it is not within 100 feet of a residentially developed property.
So it's okay?
It is allowed by the...
And we don't have to change it?
We have many other sites in the city that have been developed in residential zoned properties.
Okay, thank you.
In terms of the location, they did provide some information regarding that there's, there are coverage areas and existing towers that are in the area that they operate, Verizon operates. There are no cell towers within a half-mile. That was, is covered in the staff report. Let me cover that. That's on page three of the staff report. Zoning code requires that telecommunications facilities be located a minimum of one-half mile away from each other. So there's required separation. So there is not one within one-half mile. The closest one is about 3,500 feet, which is about three-fifths of a mile, at Cortez Park. I think, I think if I understood the testimony of the applicant, he was saying that's outside the search radius they were, they were looking. We all, every project that comes before you, we analyze based on CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. This is a very small structure in terms of the size of structures that are sometimes dealt with, such as the 450-unit apartment complex that we looked at over the last couple of years. This does not require any substantial review or any kind of environmental documentation to be done. It's what's called categoric ZIMP because it's a small structure, like a house, like a, can't think of, like a sign. Those kind of things are, do not require environmental review. I think that's the questions. Did I miss any that... Did I miss any that you needed answered?
I think you does. At least it's the, I had.
That's, that's the ones that I had on my list.
Mr. Chairman?
No, we closed it. That's, it's closed. I'm sorry, sir. Any other questions, the staff? Okay, we'll open it up to commission discussion. Who would like to start?
Well, we have confronted this same situation, it seems, several times since I've been on this commission, and as difficult as it is, we don't have a lot of latitude. As long as the applicant is able to show that the tower is needed in a particular area, we're very limited in what we could do contrary. So with, with some natural kinds of reluctance because of the number of people who have spoken tonight, I would have to say I need to support this.
Commissioner?
I think the primary concern I heard from the residents was in regards to health issues, and, you know, as required by the Federal Wireless Telecommunications Act of 96, we can't consider that. If that were a factor, it might be a different story, but we just have to consider what's on, on the map that's presented by Verizon and the gap that's there. And so, you know, I definitely listen to everyone's concerns with regards to health, but unfortunately, that can't be a factor in our decision. So, you know, based on the law, we have to make decisions within that framework.
As you can tell, I was interested in seeing if there was an alternate location, because I can understand your concerns. It seems to me that enough study has been done to say that it wasn't, there isn't another location in the immediate area that would suffice to meet Verizon's needs. I think you have to ask yourself, at least I do, if it wasn't necessary to put a cell tower there, then why would Verizon or any other company go to the expense of putting the tower there? I don't think they're just putting it up just because it's neat to have a tower up. I think there is a need for it. Whether I like it there or not, really has nothing to do with it. The law that we, again, I hate to keep repeating it, but it's the 1996 Act. It says, "Issues with health risk associated with radiation are prohibited from review by local governments." If we would prohibit because of that, we are breaking the law. We are breaking the law. And just stop and think, this law was passed in 1996. It's almost 20 years, if they had found, found something in the last 20 years, that would say, yes, there is a health risk. And there hasn't been anything, and I'm sure they're studying it because there's a lot of people just like you are asking, is there a health risk? We'd like to know. And evidently, there isn't, or they wouldn't keep this law in the books. So whether we like it, or whether we don't like it, or we do like it, we cannot turn it down by law. We'd be breaking the law for health risk. Now, somebody said something about, several of you, about property values going down. That has not been proven in any paper that I've ever seen. And you say that you have to disclose if there's a cell tower there. I have to ask the REIT estate people, do you disclose to people that they can't get cell service when they buy a home there? I don't think so. I may be wrong, but I don't think so. But you're saying you do have to let them know if there is a cell tower there. And like I said earlier, here's an article in today's paper. It's AT&amp;T, but it's just another company. They're putting in, they're going to expand internet services to 25 metro areas. There is such a large demand, and you all know this, with the i, excuse me, the iPods and all the other internet services and wireless services and what's going on today, that they have to keep putting these towers in. Until we can go satellite, which I don't think I'm going to see in my lifetime, you're going to see cell towers. And I'll give you another analogy. Years ago, you know, it was all telephone service with copper wires all over. We still have the copper wires. When wireless came in, all the telephone companies really took a bath because they still had to maintain all that copper because people still used the copper. But yet, they still had to invest in putting in, and it's competitive business. AT&amp;T or any other company is not going to take a backseat to any other company. They need to stay in front of it. And I'd be willing to bet you that the people in this room, if you couldn't get service, you'd be complaining to your carrier, saying, "I can't get service," or what are you going to do about it? Okay? I need service here. I'm not getting it. So whether I like it or not is not the issue. I'm not saying I'm crazy about where it's going, but it seems to me they've done adequate studies to say that's the best location. It's going to be hidden the best as possible. It's going to be out of the way of the golfers, which is, to me, isn't the biggest concern. And it hasn't been proven that's going to do any damage to people's health. If, if it does happen years down the road, that they say, hey, it does cause certain health hazards, I'd be willing to bet the government's going to step in and say, either fix it or take the damn cell down. But we're not at that point yet. So I sympathize with you, I emphasize with you, but there's not much we can do from this day as to say we can turn it down. It's against the law. I don't know what else to say. And I don't think there's a person in this room that would be willing to break the law. I'm sorry, no speaking. You had a chance, okay? We cannot break the law. It's as simple as that. Whether we agree or disagree with you, ma'am, if you don't hold it down, I will have you escorted out. We gave you, everybody, a chance to speak here, and I, and I welcome your input. We all do here. We're here to represent you, but you realize if we're representing you, we can't break the law either. So...
I'm going to order now.
Sir, I'd ask you not to speak from the audience. You had your chance, okay? Thank you. So with that, I'm going to close it to commission discussion unless you have something else. Okay, I would ask staff to read the resolution numbers, please.
The resolution number would be 14-5609.
Just a single resolution?
Just one resolution, correct.
Okay. Can I have a motion and a second on 14-5609?
So moved.
Make a motion for a second. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries 3O. This decision is final unless appealed to the city council within 10 days of this date. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for coming out. I appreciate your input. Let's take a five-minute recess while the clerks. Meeting's back in session. Please take your seats. Include staff? Okay, that brings us to item which was number two, originating to item number three. It's conditional use permit 13-04, category exemption, applicant loss, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong one again. Yeah, I'm sorry. 1402, applicant City of West Covina, location citywide. Requested proposed code amendment consists of certain amendments to the zoning code section of the West Covina Municipal Code as it pertains to guest houses. The proposed code amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA pursuant to Section 15061, Subcategory B3. May we hear a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. The Planning Commission initiated code amendment to consider revising the standards for guest houses on February 11, 2014. A study session to consider modifications to guest house standards was held on March 11, 2014. At that time, the Planning Commission directed staff to prepare a code amendment. A guest house is detached or attached living space that is not readily accessible from the primary house and is intended for the use of family members or employees of the main house. Currently, a guest house includes things with other descriptions, such as pool houses, game rooms, and other habitable accessory structures. The existing guest standards for guest houses will remain in place, and I have those listed on the overhead behind me. These include, the guest house must comply with all development standards for the zoning. The guest house may be a maximum of 640 square feet. One guest house is allowed per lot and may be constructed as a second story above a garage. The property owner must record a covenant. An attached addition that can be easily divided into separate units can be defined as a guest house by staff, and by definition, guest houses are not allowed to have kitchen Based on the discussion at the March 11 Planning Commission meeting, the code amendment has been drafted with the following standards. The existing, the existing standards will be retained, just as I just discussed, and administrative use permit is required to allow a guest house. The minimum lot area required for the establishment of a guest house is 15,000 square feet. One covered parking space shall be required for the guest house in addition to parking requirements for the primary house. In addition, guest houses shall count towards single-family parking requirements based on the square footage or number of bedrooms. The distance between the, the house and a detached guest house shall be no less than 25 feet. A guest house shall comply with the required 25-foot rear setback. The architectural style of the guest house shall match the primary residence. The guest house shall, shall be limited to one bedroom and one bathroom. Guest houses may only be located behind the primary residence in the rear yard of a property, and guest houses will be required to be reviewed by the subcommittee. In addition, there was another recommendation that, or direction that the Planning Commission gave us, which was to establish a standard that's not necessarily for guest houses, but for all additions, and that was that for consistency with the guest house standards, the code amendment would also add language that any additions to single-family houses shall match the remainder of the residence. So all those things have been included in the resolution that's before you tonight as Attachment 1. In addition, I did want to, as we looked at this, we did note there's a few other issues that we wanted to discuss with you, and they're, that are not right now included in the resolution, but which we can easily add based on the direction or decision that the Planning Commission gives us tonight. The first of those issues is the restriction of window locations. We did discuss that at the March 11 hearing. The direction at that meeting was to restrict windows on the side lot lines unless they were in excess of the minimum setback. But upon reflection, that standard does not provide clear direction to applicants about how close the building wall can be to the side property line to allow windows. So for instance, you have a five-foot setback, the building is at five feet from the side set, or the side yard, they can't have a window. So if they move it to five feet, one inches, can they have a window? How far, how far back does it have to be? That's the question. So the city, in considering that, the city does have three different side yard setback requirements, which are five, seven, and 10 foot, depending on the area district of the city that, that the house is located in. So in considering that, we formulated three options. Option one, restrict windows on the side lot line unless they are at least one foot greater than the required setback. Two, restrict windows on the side lot line unless they're at least five foot greater than the required setback. And three, restrict windows on the side lot line unless they're at least 10 feet from their, the side lot line. Staff is recommending option three to restrict windows unless they're at least 10 feet from the property line. This is a simple requirement that is easy to understand, and 10 feet's a fairly significant distance to, to place and to have a window located. So that's our recommendation. You know, open this up for discussion, because I'd like to get comment from the Planning Commission before we move on to the, to the second of the three items.
Comments?
Makes sense to me.
I agree. I think 10's good.
Okay. I agree. I agree with option number three. We all do.
Okay, very good. All right, so we'll move to the next one, which is bedroom definition. The zoning section of the municipal code does not currently include a definition for bedrooms. With the recent change to the code requiring three-car garages in houses with five or more bedrooms, and the proposed requirement limiting the number of bedrooms in guest houses, it is advisable to adopt a definition. And I can, I can let you know that staff has already been wrestling with this since the five-bedroom definition for a three-car garage was adopted and took effect beginning of March. We have dealt with probably half a dozen issues result, regarding that, how you define a bedroom. People using other terms when it appears to be a bedroom to staff. So we are recommending the following definition. A bedroom is a room used for sleeping purposes that is separable from other rooms by a door and accessible to a bathroom without crossing another bedroom or living room, whether designated as a bedroom or den, study, library, bonus room, media room, or other similar term. A dining room, living room, kitchen, hall, closet, powder room, pantry, kitchen nook, laundry room, garage, and bathroom shall be specifically excluded without limitations. So what we try to do is, is put it in, to define what a bedroom was, and then we define what a bedroom wasn't. So we're saying if it's one of these rooms, then it is not a bedroom. But if it's, if it's something that can be used as a bedroom, whether you're designing it as such or not, we're going to define it as a bedroom. And so we, again, we formulated three. One is no change, leave the code as it is with no definition. Option two, adopt the proposed definition of bedroom. And number three is direct staff to create a different bedroom definition. Clearly, it's probably pretty obvious, we're recommending option number two with the proposed bedroom definition. So I'd be happy to answer any questions or hear any response to, to that proposed definition.
I'd just like to say the Design Review Committee this evening addressed a very similar topic to this, a home where four bedrooms were there, but it really looked like five bedrooms. And so we, that was dealt with very well by staff recommendation, and we certainly supported it. So I, I like the definition that you've given us.
So are you recommending option two? Commissioner Blackmore?
I was in that meeting with Commissioner Menefee, and it was discussed, and I think option two is definitely the best way to go.
Commissioner Castellanos?
I agree. That's a, that's a good definition. I think it encompasses what needs to be included in the definition, so I like it.
All in favor of option two? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll go to the last question. Pool bathrooms, detached bathrooms. There are circumstances where property owners propose detached pool bathrooms with a large yard and a swimming pool. In the past, staff has generally approved these pool bathrooms as guest houses and applied the same regulations. Given the proposed changes to the code, and specifically the limitation that guest houses will not be allowed on lots less than 15,000 square feet, it would be appropriate to address pool bathrooms in the code. The establishment of a definition for detached bathrooms, and we're talking pool bathrooms, but there are other circumstances where people like to have a detached bathroom. So maybe a pool, and that's, so it may be just a detached, so that's why we've included them together in the same discussion. The establishment of a definition for detached bathrooms will allow staff to address requests for bathrooms in garages and other non-habitable structures that could easily be converted to, to living space. Below is the recommended definition for pool bathrooms, detached bathrooms, and single-family zones. A bathroom detached and incidental from the house for the purpose of use by individuals outside the house and having only an exterior entrance to access the bathroom. So what that means is you could attach it to a garage, but there couldn't be a door between the bathroom and the garage. You would have, you'd have to go outside and, and enter. Hopefully, that's clear. Option one, no change. Option two, adopt a definition of pool bathroom, detached bathroom, and add to the list of accessory uses. And I don't have that clearly before you, but in the code, there is a list of accessory uses that things like guest houses and even second units are being listed under there, and detached garages and those kind of things, gazebos. And so we're suggesting that, that pool bathrooms, detached bathrooms be added to that list, so it's clear that they are allowed. Adopt a definite, number three, adopt a definition of pool bathroom and add to the list of accessory uses. So the difference between option two and option three is, option three is more restricted. It would just say that you can only, we would take off all the reference to other types of bathrooms. It would only be for pool, you would have to have a pool to have a detached bathroom. That's what option number three is. Option number two allows people to have a bath, with a pool, or in circumstance where they don't have a pool, where they, for some reason or other, would like to have a detached bathroom outside. So staff is recommending option number two, pools and detached bathrooms, or pool and detached bathrooms would be added to the list of accessory structures allowed in the... and definition provided the bathroom can only be accessible from the outdoors.
Jeff? Help me out. Why would you want to have a bathroom, a separate bathroom, if you didn't have like a pool facility? I mean, what would a reason?
The times that I've dealt with people that counted at one of that, they might have a hobby, and I'll use woodworking, I'll throw that one under the bus, they might have a hobby like woodworking, where they're outside and they get dirty, and they don't want to go in the house to clean up, they want to clean up before they go in the house.
Didn't they normally have that in the workshop itself?
No. In the past, well, that goes back to the discussion about guest houses. In the past, we would have allowed it as a guest house. But if their lot is less than 15,000 square feet, they will not be allowed to have a guest house. We are concerned with allowing bathrooms in workshops or garages because they can easily be converted into living space. So we are trying to limit that and provide some kind of limitation so that those things don't happen, don't happen readily, let me say it that way.
I just couldn't envision why you'd want one separate.
And I think I would say this, and Fabiola can chime in if she has an opinion on this, that doesn't come up very often, but in my experience, it does come up. Generally, people want it for a pool bathroom. But it does come up every once in a while where people have a hobby that they get dirty, and I guess I'll just be specific, because I've heard people tell me this. My wife doesn't want me coming in the house when I'm like this. So, and I hear some second to that motion from the audience, so.
Jeff? Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah, just a quick question, Jeff. I didn't see in the report any issues talking about showers. If we did have a bathroom, is a shower acceptable?
A shower would be acceptable, yes.
Okay.
At least the way we have it written now, a shower would be acceptable. If the Commission wanted to direct us in another way, we could do that. Generally, with a pool bathroom, though, people do want to shower out there.
Right. Okay.
Commissioner Menefee?
Yes. The concept of the bathroom detached and incidental seems very sound. I'm not sure I understand why it's related to guest house standards. Isn't it broader than guest house standards?
It is broader. The reason it's related is because in the past, when somebody wanted a detached bathroom, we approved it as a guest house. Now, we will not have a way to approve it without a broad interpretation, which leaves us open to other broad interpretations from the outside.
Anyone else?
Are we all in favor of option 2?
Yes.
Yes. Four oh, option 2.
Okay. That concludes the presentation. The proposed amendments have been drafted, and a code text is attached. We will add those three changes to it, and you should amend the motion to include those. But if the Planning Commission chooses to recommend approval of the proposed code amendment, the City Council will hold a public hearing to consider adopting the proposed amendments. That concludes my presentation.
Question, Jeff. Maybe this was in here before, but on the very first page of Planning Department staff report?
I'm sorry, which page?
The very first page. Item number 2, Agenda, Summary, Background, Project Description.
Yes.
Okay. Maybe this was in here before, and I didn't see it. But a guest house is intended for the use of family member or employees of the main house. Why would we have employees in there?
That's how the definition is worded right now.
I have a problem with that. I mean, I don't know how we'd police it, but it seems to me, by putting employees in there, or giving them, you know, open forum to have their employees stay back there. And that's really not what it's intended for, I don't think. I don't know what, how the rest of the Commission feels.
Let me respond. Perhaps I didn't, one of the things, and I do apologize, because I didn't really cover that in the staff report, but one of the things that we are doing here is changing the definition. So what I was quoting there is what the current definition is. So maybe I should direct your attention. If you would go to Attachment 1, which is a resolution, and then go to page 4 of the, I'm sorry, I'll let everybody get there, including the audience. Attachment 1, which is a resolution, and then go to page 4, which is Exhibit A, first page of Exhibit A.
Okay.
There it does, we do have a different, you'll look down the middle of the page, there's some bold and underlined area, and there's some cross that area. That is where we're changing the definition. We did talk about this last time, and I apologize, I didn't bring it up here. So we're changing the definitions, and you'll see there that it does talk about the existing definition, "Living quarters within accessory building for the sole use of persons employed on the premises or more temporary by guests." Our suggested change, which again, we talked about last time, but "A permanently constructed living quarters separate from the primary residence and having no kitchen facilities, which is clearly subordinate or incidental to the primary residence on the same lot. The guest house may include only a sleeping area, living area, and bathroom within an attached or detached accessory structure and for use by guests or occupants of the primary residence. The guest house shall not be separately rented, leased, or let by direct or indirect compensation or otherwise occupied separately from the primary residence."
Okay, so the employee thing is out of there, but they can be invited guests.
Correct.
They could be an employee.
Theoretically, they could be an employee, but it's not directly referenced.
Yeah, okay. I don't have a problem with that. Yes, Commissioner Blackburn?
At one time, we had discussed how long you could have a guest stay in the guest house. Have we entertained any amount of time that we'd like to keep?
We didn't bring that up, we didn't bring that up or discuss that the previous study session. My thought on that is that that is going to be a slippery slope. I think we're better off patrolling the way it's constructed rather than the way it's utilized.
But if we put something in there, I know, again, policing it is almost impossible, but at least it puts some teeth in it. When people put a guest house, they know what we're thinking and what the standard is. Now, if they want to violate that, that's one thing, but by not putting it in there, we're just giving them open season.
Well, we are in one sense, but to be a living quarters, for someone to live in, it has to have kitchen facilities. Kitchen facilities are prohibited. So my point there is, that's an easy thing for staff to, if we get a report, and we get allowed entry into the guest house, we can see physically that there's a kitchen facility. We can go after that. We can address that. We cannot go back every two weeks and see who's living there. That will not be a possible enforcement.
I realize it's impossible to police, but on the other hand, we're just not putting any teeth in this thing at all. I mean, how many people right now are living in garages that don't even have bathroom facilities? I mean, we know that's happening all over. So the kitchen facilities are not the issue, but I kind of agree with Commissioner Blackburn. And we're just saying, you can live there as long as you want. That's what we're saying, if we don't put any timeframe.
I guess I would request that the Planning Commission maybe discuss and come up with what kind of timeframe they think is appropriate.
I don't know, am I the only one here? I mean.
I could just throw out some numbers.
If I may briefly comment, Honorable Chair and Commissioner. I would note that the definition includes not only guests, but occupants of the primary residence, determining, making a distinguishing between a guest and what qualifies as an occupant may be difficult. Additionally, I note that there are rights to association, rights to a family unit that might be tread upon if there are specific residential days or guest limitations placed on this. So I would just tread carefully, I think.
Thoughts? Thoughts? Commissioner Menefee?
We've talked a lot in the last few months about issues of emotion versus the issues of what I think the Planning Commission is all about. And Jeff, just, I wish he'd repeat it, because he just said it so succinctly, when he said if we can focus on building standards and things that have to do with the Planning Commission's important responsibilities as opposed to emotional issues, which tend to let us only think about what's right and wrong by our own standards, we're much better Do you remember what you said? You said it so well, I wanted to write it.
Well, we generally try to focus on built or objective standards, things that you can feel and touch, as opposed to things that you have to, operational issues, especially on the, on single-family. I mean, when you get into conditioning use from it, it's a little bit different story. You've got to focus on some operational, but it's just, it's just much easier for us to enforce. We have gone through the motions of trying to address issues where people reported, people occupying structures that were not allowed to be occupied in, and it's just, it's, it's not very efficient. And I, so I don't know if I'm helping out Commissioner Menefee any, but that's sort of how staff sees that issue.
I don't know. I just feel just because we can enforce it, we shouldn't back away from it. But I'll go with my fellow commissioners. Maybe we need to make a poll. Commissioner Menefee, do you want to put a timeframe or not?
No. Commissioner Blackburn?
I have mixed feelings. I'd like to see a timeframe, but I'll just share a story with you, maybe which would help answer my dilemma. I have a friend who lives in San Reyno, whose aging mother needs constant care. They do have a caregiver living in their guest house, who basically doesn't live in the primary residence. But when the, when my friend leaves for work, she comes in to take care of the, of his mother. And I'm not sure what parameters would have to follow, but I would, I would not want to put a timeframe on somebody that could not stay more than six months. But as I said earlier, I don't like the fact that somebody can come in and stay for a year or longer in a, in a guest house. So I'm not sure the wording, how I would want to accept that, because I certainly would not want to deprive somebody from having a caregiver there. But on the other hand, I certainly don't want somebody to stay in a guest house for a year, especially if it's a non-family member.
Thanks for your help, Commissioner Blackburn. You made things crystal clear for us.
Let me comment again, and I realize I'm kind of interrupting your flow of discussion, but I, we do have to be careful, and I think that's what the city attorney was kind of referring to. It's, it's, at this age that we're at now, it's virtually impossible for us to define family. We won't be able to do it. You're not going to be able to restrict it because this guy's a family member, but this guy's not. And in my experience, people have used guest houses for the, for people who are in-laws or grandparents or children or handicapped adults to live in. So keep in mind that that's, that's the situations that we're talking about. So those people, many of those people, it's, there's the time, well, let's just talk about a handicapped adult for a moment. They might live there 20 or 30 years, and people are specifically building these for those purposes. So I just want to let you know what we hear at the counter and what we know some of these things are being built for. I think your concern is based on, on the rental aspect, and I do appreciate that, and that's, we tried to cover that in the definition, the rental aspect. And then the conversion aspect is covered already with the covenant and the definition of kitchen. So we do, we will listen if that, if it's the, if it's the Planning Commission's desire and wisdom to, to change, to add something, we can, we can do that. But we are concerned that we get into an area that is not going to be legally defensible or, well, I guess that's the bigger issue, it's not going to be legally defensible. Because whether we can enforce it or not is one thing, but legal defensibility can open a whole can of worms that we don't want to go, we don't want to open.
Commissioner Castellanos?
I agree. I don't think we need any more legal expenses, so I think the wording should stay as it is.
You're helping him out. I mean.
I'm actually quite busy at the moment, so.
Well, Commissioner Blackburn, I don't know if I have an answer from you yet or not.
Well, one thing, this is a public hearing, so we need to open the public hearing. So perhaps, maybe you want to just hold that in abeyance for a few minutes, let the public speak, and then perhaps you'll have some.
I wanted a question, a different subject. I thought we had agreed that we were going to do notification of neighbors. Is that in there?
That is. That is in there. I didn't cover it very clearly, but an administrative use permit requires 300-foot notification.
Okay. How far, what's the, 500 feet?
300.
300? Okay. I just want to make sure that was in there.
It is in there, yes.
I just want to say I was fascinated with Page 6 and the discussion of household pits, poultry, homing pigeons, rabbit chinchillas, and bovine animals. Thank you.
Welcome to our world.
I'm going to open up the public testimony at this time. Irene, are you for or against, or just want to speak?
Yeah, just want to speak.
Okay, come on up and speak.
Good evening. First, I'd like to say that I was really pleased as I read this, that you've tightened up some things very nicely as far as the rules and regulations go. However, my same concern is, we've already got so many people who are taking advantage of their quote "right" to have a guest house. And I would like to urge you, now that I realize that we don't have to have it by "right," because we have neighborhood, neighboring cities that don't have this sort of thing by "right," I'd like to urge you to do away with a guest house by "right" and do it by "permit." I think that that would make it easier to police, for lack of a better word. And also, I think it would prevent many people who think they hear, "Oh, I have the right to do this," they're not going to see if they've got 15,000 square feet or anything like that. They're just going to go ahead and put up their guest house or remodel their garage. So I urge you to think very seriously about just removing our "by 'right' and have it by "permit." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. Marietta Spillani? There she is.
Good evening.
Now, you said you're against this.
Well, I am against guest houses in general. But I had to.
All right.
A little bit, or the group of us, of neighbors. Really thank you very much for this, and thank you for catching a few things that we all forgotten. My questions were a little bit on the window section. It was a little unclear for me, and I, the last time I spoke, I showed you the picture diagram. Baldwin Park goes as far of their design guidelines as actually showing a man sitting in a recliner watching his TV with his window. And the new addition or guest house, the window lined up directly with them, saying, "Bad, move the window this way, good." And maybe that would be easier for people to understand, which is one of the reasons they've brought us all here, is that the fur cough tough shed, the windows lined up directly with our bedroom windows and neighbors' bedroom windows, like they put them exactly that way. The other thing with windows too is, it might just be more their planning looks on the design element, and I think their planning should require anyone with additions or future guest houses to actually, it's so easy to take a picture of your neighbors, because they could have put the long rectangular windows in that are so aesthetic and design elements in the architecture in our area in West Covina, they're above all our bedrooms, our bed wall, and they would have had all that sunlight and been able to open them, but they wouldn't have been able to see through it because they're along the ceiling line. And they're the long horizontal ones. You probably have it at your house. So if they think staying with the architecture of the home or windows, I'm a designer, I do awning windows an awful lot with privacy glass, that no one could see through or out, but you could still get ventilation. So there's a lot of things they could do with windows. I think it might be more important to actually show what window you're putting in this addition or guest house and how it lines up with the surrounding properties, and that's just taking a picture. The other thing, the group of the neighbors I represent, is if we're going to, in Section 11, say that a guest house is one bedroom, one bath, and a living quarter, we still all feel that 640 square feet is too large. We understand that the lot size now has to be larger for that, but based on the tough shed put, it's, everybody can now see how big that actually is. It's bigger than most apartments in downtown Chicago or New York, where you hear it from. And we think that a bedroom, a bath, and a small area to have a, you don't get a hotel room you have that size, you have the time, unless you're in a suite in a very expensive hotel. And then, Item 7, the definition of guest house, I still think needs to be worked out. And if you remember, the first time we all came like an angry mob, we had a problem with the word "guest" and "temporary." And when you look at Walnut, Walnut's guidelines do state how long someone could stay. They do have exact dates on how long a guest is considered a guest. And let's just read Webster's. What does "guest" mean? This definition is getting better, but it's not there yet. If you are somebody that's handicapped and you're living in a place for like 20 years, like you mentioned, you're not a guest anymore. You're handicapped, maybe you should add. You're handicapped, maybe you should add on to the house. In regards to Commissioner Blackburn's situation, a caregiver, I totally understand that, but your neighbors wouldn't be complaining so much if there was just a caregiver putting her head down and going to bed there at night. She wouldn't call the cops, because she knows their mother or father is dying, or someone's had a horrible accident. Your neighbors wouldn't complain. This is too general, and we've all agreed that there was no way for the neighbors to police this, or our police department to protect us when we call and say someone's moving in. It needs to be fine-tuned more. Thanks.
Thank you. Now Lloyd, you have to make up your mind if you're for or against something, and quit putting question marks on these things.
See, I don't have a problem with guest houses.
Oh, okay.
It's what the problem within the guest house. I know you, the planning commissioners adopted what was Number 10 that Jeff was talking about, 10 feet back. My concern is, if your house is still sitting 10 feet back from the property line, and you have a window there sight view of your neighbor's swimming pool, like when this was first brought up in the first place, that doesn't do any good. 10 feet is 10 feet, you can still see it. I would love to see on the side of the guest house, the facing neighbor, why can't you put a state-clear window on that? I don't care where the window's at then, it eliminates...
Put what kind of window?
A state-clear, you mean the smaller ones up higher? This way, it eliminates the person sitting in the chair, whatever they're doing, looking straight over at their neighbors. This gives them a little bit of privacy. And the other part about where we're talking about how long you can stay in one. The problem that you would have there is if someone's staying in the house for, let's say, six months, and the people want them to stay there longer, they'd say, "Well, okay, move out, move inside the house there for a few weeks, so a month, and we'll put you back out there for another six months." So this is something else you have to look into. So I'm hoping that the windows, our regular windows on the guest houses are either facing the house or the inside of the yard and have a state-clear window on the outside of it. The rest of it, I don't have a problem with. Thank you.
Thank you, Lloyd. Anyone else? For, against?
Oh, I'm getting neutral.
Well, you didn't put, but you didn't put a card in, so it doesn't make a difference. No, you did it for zoning.
Oh, no, I did it for this. When I talked to you, you said for.
Yeah, for. Well, you said zoning. Did you like this, come up and speak, Carol? We'll let you do it. Yes, you may.
Thank you. First of all, I would like to compliment all of you, and I have never, ever, in my three years of coming to these meetings, complimented anybody. Let me tell you, tonight is a first. I appreciate how hard you have worked on this. It's a sticky wicket. It's what it is. At some point, you have to draw a line on what is a guest and who has moved in. And you know that will help, the homeowners. They don't want somebody moving in forever. I have been to a lot of hotel rooms. They have a microwave, they have a sink, they have a refrigerator that's supposed to hold drinks. What is going to prevent that kind of appliance from being moved in to this guest house? When you go to the grocery store and you look at the vast array of TV dinners and foods that can be stuffed into a microwave and zapped, you can live on that. That's not what we want in this city. And so there has to be a timeframe, so that people move in, they are guests and nothing else. Now, we have had the city apply for a grant to do a general plan. It's going to be like two years or more down the road. It's going to have a lot of input from the residents. If they want something else besides this narrow perimeter of a guest house, then so be it. But for now, we need to keep it something that can be controlled. We have one code enforcement, so we're not going to be able to do anything with it. Once this is done and approved, and the permits are all pulled and checked by the inspectors, and it's a fine project, then we're going to leave as a city. And then, that's when stuff is going to come in. And if the neighbors don't complain, somebody could be moving in. And that's not what we're about. So is that for or against? I don't know. But I'm telling you what I think, okay? How's that? Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Anyone else? Sir?
My name's David, I've lived here for...
Come up and state your name, please.
53 years, over 53 years in the city of West Covina, and I've seen the changes.
Your name, sir, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, David Schwartz.
Okay.
I wasn't prepared to speak, but in fact, I just came and I saw the sign on the golf course, and I came down, that's why I'm unshaven and not dressed properly, so ask for your apologies there. I'm not sure what you guys are trying to achieve by this, or what you're trying to do is, are you not allowed to rent out, are you guys trying to avoid so people don't rent out extra rooms in their backyard that they make up with a guest house, put up a tough shed and then rent it out? And if that's the case, are residents of West Covina not allowed to rent out single rooms in their own home to strangers for rent? Because I know that's going on in West Covina. So what are we, what are you trying to achieve by changing all these definitions and restrictions? I can understand some problems with windows looking into neighbors' houses, but I think if people are building homes, and they want to make it aesthetically right, and they want natural light coming in, we shouldn't be looking and saying, "No, you can't do that." We're spending thousands of dollars, you know, on remodels. So my question is, what is trying to be achieved right now? I don't understand, listening to all this, what is trying to be achieved, that you're making these changes in the, you know, in the planning here to avoid problems in the future? That's what I don't understand. Because I think it's wrong for government to keep on putting more and more and more and more laws and restricting people. And I can give you a great example, an analogy, and one is cellphone usage. People are driving a car, and they're talking on a cellphone, and they're obeying laws, and they're not a distraction you shouldn't get a ticket for. But if they're driving crazy, they should. We don't need a law saying you can't talk on the cellphone. There's already vehicle codes saying that you can't drive distracted. That doesn't mean if you're drinking Coke, or eating, or talking with your friends. So the more restrictive a government gets, the more repressive it is among its citizens.
I'm going to have to ask you to keep on the item that's raw.
Well, that's what I'm asking you, I don't understand...
We can't talk about other things that aren't on the agenda.
No, I understand. I just use that as analogy, because I don't understand what you're trying to achieve by this whole discussion. And that's what I want to know, just for clarification. I don't know if I'm a for or against, because I don't know what you're trying to achieve. That's my question.
Okay. My suggestion would be that maybe after the meeting, if you want to stay, you can talk to one of our staff members, rather than go in a whole discussion of what we've done before and why we're doing it.
Okay. It can't be done in a quick sentence?
Pardon?
It can't be answered in a couple sentences?
Well, it's not, we're not going to have a dialogue here, that's what it's about.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Any of the staff wishes to answer at this point in time?
Well, there's a lot of questions that were brought up, and some of them, I think, are beyond my purview. I would say that the question on whether these will, under the proposed code amendment, guest houses would not be, they would be changed from being allowed by right to being required to have administrative use permit. So that is what is proposed. So currently, they're allowed by right. The planning commission has directed us to prepare a code amendment that would require administrative use permit, require notification, require study and review, require review by the subcommittee. So it would not be by right under the new code. The questions on windows, the subcommittee does have purview, so the subcommittee could review the windows. If the planning commission wanted to make further restrictions on windows, that's, the planning commission has the ability, they can direct us to not allow windows, to only allow windows. It does get a little bit confusing, because if, let's say you have a 100-foot-wide lot, and they're putting it right in the middle of the lot, so that it's 45 feet away from the property line, we're not going to allow windows that are facing, so that's the problem here. It's hard to draw a standard that includes every possibility that's out there. But that is why the subcommittee was formed to begin with, to look at those issues. But anyway, the planning commission does have the purview to decide if they want to make some change to what's before them right now.
I agree with what you're saying, that's why the subcommittee is there, there's so many different variables. The subcommittee can look at this, and like you say, if it's 30 feet away from the property line, it really doesn't make any difference. But if it's within 10 feet and all that, they could say you're going to have to put rectangular windows high up, or opaque windows or something like that, rather than putting, you know, teeth in this thing that you can't punch from the law, from the ordinance. So my recommendation, leave it with the subcommittee, and that's the way it is today, or will be.
Will be. It's what is proposed here. And we didn't necessarily talk about the size, 640 square feet is what it's always been, so I don't know, that's up to the purview to determine if they want a different definition. I think the commission has already began the discussion whether they want to provide a definition that limits, and the term "guest house" is just a term, I'm still a little baffled about where it came from, but when I looked at other cities, other cities use the same term. So there's some history to it, at least in this area. In our code, if you go to that one page I was showing you, Page Six of the resolution, you will see that it wasn't just that term, and we can change the name if we'd like to to avoid that confusion. Previously, or currently in the code, it's called "guest house" or "accessory living quarters." So we could stop calling it a guest house and call it accessory living quarters, which takes away part of that discussion about what's a guest, and who's this, and how long should they stay there. That's just food for thought. Right now, we're proposing to eliminate the accessory living quarters, just because it's a term we don't use at all. But it is a term that maybe is more descriptive to how it's used than "guest house" is. See, was there something else that, oh, I did want to clarify the kitchen facilities. The code today limits kitchen facilities, all those things that were mentioned as kitchens and microwaves, refrigerators, those are kitchen facilities. So if we were going to a guest house and see those, there's going to be a covenant on file that the owner signs that says, "I'm not going to put those in." So we have a way to enforce that now, we don't really need any more enforcement teeth with that. I think that probably answers all the questions. In a general sense, the code is what it is today, it allows guest houses. The planning commission is seeking to make those more restrictive, because there's been some problems, and there's neighbors here tonight that would testify to those problems.
Just so you know, there's, some cities don't allow guest houses at all. And we looked at that, too, and decided amongst the commission that no. As a matter of fact, there's 550 of them in West Covina that we know of right now, today. So all we're trying to do is get some restrictions around, so it's not just free open rain. And we had a particular, for your information, house that many of the neighbors came, where this guy just put up this thing without talking to the neighbors, and it was very obtrusive. So that's what started this whole thing, let's put some guidelines of what you can do and what you can't do. But as far as enforcing something, it's next to impossible without breaking the door down and see if they got a microwave in there. But yet, I don't think we need to ignore it. I think we need to have something in writing that says what you can and can't do, not just let them have open rain because we can't enforce it. Okay? So that's, I hope that helps out a little bit.
No, thank you.
Yeah.
You know, by all of a sudden, after all these years, it's now not.
Right. Okay, any other discussions, Commissioner?
And if you get tired of HBO or something, you could stream those past meetings to see how it all went down. Oh, there you go.
With the new charter, I can't find anything on the TV. Commissioner Blackburn?
The last few comments that were made by some of the audience, I have, in the city of Walnut, where they do have restrictions, I have some concerns, because number one, to have somebody be a code enforcement officer from the city go out and investigate it, there has to be somebody complaining or a reason to have them go out. I'm not real sure that, and I apologize for the, we have one code enforcement officer, Terry, in the city of West Covina, and she is swamped. And one of the last things that I would want to have Terry do, or anybody else do, is go out to a guest house that somebody has complained about, and if it's a guest house, probably within three minutes could pack up whatever stuff they have in that guest house and move it inside the house, or put it in their car, or whatever. And the code inspector, or the code enforcement officer, I should say, would probably have no evidence that somebody was staying there. So I have, I haven't, again, I apologize to Commissioner Holtz, I'm a little bit wishy-washy, I'm not sure which way. I'm almost leaning to the point that I would like no restrictions on a timeframe. And the reason I say that is, I don't think it's enforceable. So that's...
We're kind of all over the map here. We're back on how many days and all that? Do we want to close that out at this point in time? You're not for having any timeframe, Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes.
Commissioner Menefee?
I said that.
No timeframe question? Okay, 4-0, no specific timeframe. Anything else for commission discussion before we go to, any other questions of staff or commission discussion before we, okay. Staff to read resolution number, please.
Yes, the resolution number will be 14-5610.
Okay, do we have a motion?
If I may just clarify for the motion, that the direction that was given earlier on the options in the staff report would be included in that motion.
That's correct, the amendments, the three, I think there were three amendments, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Would be included in that motion. I have a second?
Second.
Second, my question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 4-0. Okay. That decision is final unless appealed to the city council within...
No, this is a code amendment, so it'll be scheduled for council review. This is a recommendation to the city council. I don't have a date when it'll be scheduled. My rough estimate will be, it won't be before June.
Okay, very good. Okay, now, let's see, we're jumping around.
But I will notify, just as we have in the past.
Okay, that brings us to Item Number Four, Code Amendment Number 13-05. Capican City of West Covina, location citywide. The proposed code amendment consists of certain amendments to the zoning code section of the West Covina Municipal Code as it pertains to donation drop boxes. The proposed code amendment is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to Section 1506-1, Sub B3. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, this code amendment was initiated by the planning commission. The city council held a public hearing on March 4, 2014, and determined to send the code amendment back to the planning commission to study the issue of donation drop boxes at religious facilities. The planning commission held a study session on March 25, 2014, and the planning commission accepted staff's recommendation, and I have the recommendation, or actually, say, the options, and the recommendation that was selected listed on Page Two of the staff report. So the selected option was to exempt donation drop boxes for nonprofit businesses and religious facilities which place and operate their own donation drop boxes on the property at which they operate. The thought behind that was that the recommended exemption allows for maintenance, as members of the religious facility, employees of the nonprofit will be at the site several times during the week, and allow for inspection and maintenance at that time. The problem with donation drop boxes had been that there were situations where nobody was maintaining them for maybe months at a time. Staff is also recommending two additional revisions to be made to the proposed code amendment, and that includes adding a sentence on to the end of the definition to say the term "donation drop box" does not include any such box located inside of a building or structure, it's only for those outside. And then, lastly, a new standard, or additional standard, that would say graffiti-resistant coatings shall be used on approved donation drop boxes to assist in detering graffiti. So with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission adopt the resolution, recommending approval to the city council.
Any questions of staff? None? Okay. We'll open up the public testimony. Anybody want to speak? For? Everybody want to speak against? Okay, we'll close the public testimony and commission discussion. Commissioner Menefee, you want to start? No? Okay. Does anybody wish to...
Sure. Well, I think we've covered the necessary changes, and looks good to me.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yeah, we have discussed this on several occasions, and the changes that were suggested by city council. were suggested by city council, I certainly think those would be good changes, so I would support the recommendations of staff.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, okay, could we have staff read the resolution numbers?
Resolution number will be 14-5611.
Okay. We have a motion to adopt Resolution 14-5611?
Don't move.
Second. Commissioner Menefee, second by Commissioner Castellanos, all in favor?
All right.
Aye, aye, passes 4-0.
No, that's the same as the previous one, it will be scheduled for, it's a recommendation to council, it will be scheduled for a hearing for the city council.
Okay, non-hearing items? We have none? None? Continuation of oral communication, anybody wants to speak on anything that was not discussed on the agenda at this time? Give up? Okay, commission reports, comments, and miscellaneous items? Any reports from the commission at this time, comments or miscellaneous items? None? None? Okay. Planning directors report?
We do have the status report for April 2014 of projects the planning commission approved in the past, and we have subcommittee minutes from the March 11, subcommittee meeting.
I just, I just want to clarify, on that window issue, we're leaving that up to the subcommittee?
That is correct.
Okay, I want to make sure, okay. City council action?
Nothing to report from city council action.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry to interrupt. I must have misunderstood something. I thought we all approved the 10-foot setback.
Yes, you are correct.
For windows, it was the issue of what kind of window, which would be subject to the...
Correct. The 10-foot will be a standard.
Thank you.
Yes.
We did city council action? Nothing?
There's nothing to report from city council.
Okay. Make a motion for adjournment?
Don't move.
Don't move? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.